Brendan Tedstone, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Her friend Nasrula?
Here.
Brian Herr?
Here.
Mary Jo LaFreniere?
Here.
Amy Ritterbush?
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Norman Kamalu?
Here.
Elaine Lazarus?
Yeah.
Additional speakers this evening may include Carl Harris, Janet McKay, Robert Nielsen, Samuel Dokinovic, and John Neese. If there's anyone attending that would like to speak during the public forum portion of the agenda, you must notify the host in the meeting host in advance. You may do this now by using the raise hand feature of Zoom. I request a motion to enter into executive session to approve executive session minutes to consider strategy with respect to the purchase, lease, or sale and value of real property in relation to the Main Street parking 2535 Main Street, the Main Street Quarter Project, former Liberty Mutual property in the Upper Charles Trail, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board to allow Norman Kamalu and Elaine Lazarus to participate in the discussion and to reconvene in an open session at the conclusion of executive session. Mr. Nasrula, how do you vote?
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Sorry, it's been two weeks. I forget all my Rogers orders. No further discussion. Mr. Nasrula, how do you vote?
Nasrula, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
LaFreniere?
LaFreniere, yes.
Miss Ritterbush?
Ritterbush, yes.
Tedstone, yes. So we're going to leave Zoom and go to Google Meet. After the conclusion of the executive session, we will return to Zoom. We are back. All right. We are back. Let me see what we have here for panelists. We have me, Brian, Amy. All right, good. So can you guys hear me? Okay. So as a preliminary matter, this is Brendan Tedstone, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. First, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Her friend Nasrula? She's not here yet. Brian Herr?
Here.
Mary Jo LaFreniere? Is on mute. And Amy Ritterbush?
Here.
Obviously, I'm here and I'm watching to see. Mary Jo is on mute. This open meeting of the Hopkins Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we are complying with the executive order that suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The executive order which can find posted, I'm sorry, which you can find posted with agenda material in this meeting allows the public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as the public bodies make provisions through adequate alternative means to ensure interested members of the public are provided reasonable access to the deliberations of the meeting. Ensured public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom webinar as posted in the town's web meeting calendar and the board's agenda identifying how the public may join. Additionally, the meeting may also be broadcast to one of its many channels or platforms. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first agenda item. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will invite board members to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Excuse me, just a minute. Further, please remember to meet your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. But every agenda item will feature public comment for the public forum of the portion of the agenda. The chair will work with the meeting host to call on each pre-registered speaker to make their comment. Each speaker must begin by identifying their name and address. Each speaker will have up to two minutes for their comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting shall be conducted by roll call. Pledge of Allegiance, let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. All right, so public forum. So Josh, I see there is one, two, three, four people that have their hand raised. So those are the four people that we will have speak here. So just give me a moment here. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? If so, identify yourself by name and address for us. So Josh, why don't you liven up the first person here, please? Let me know who it is. Are we on?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Alana Cassidy of 19 Eastview Road. I'm speaking in support of the MACP C pledge that will be discussed later tonight. There are many reasons I support this pledge, but I wanted to focus on just one tonight. Last week, I had the privilege of meeting with Hopkins Police Chief Joe Bennett and the town manager Norman Kamalu and was so impressed by all the programs that the Hopkins Police are doing, the diversity and de-escalation trainings that the Hopkins Police regularly attend, and just the overall genuine care that our, the Hopkins Police has for our community. The police are doing so, so, so much. As members of the community, we just don't hear about it all. One of the main takeaways from our meeting that we had was the need for improved transparency and communication between the police and the town, because so many of us town members are not aware of all the positive work. that the Hopkins Police are doing and all the effort that they're constantly taking. Hopkins Police Department, led by Chief Bennett, is already following the principles of the impact pledge. I believe one of the significant and important benefits of the town of Hopkins and taking the M A P C pledge would be for the Hopkins Police to be recognized for all the efforts that they're already putting forward, specifically with principles three and four of the pledge. The pledge sends a clear, concrete message to the community that the police are committed to addressing racism and violence. They're already doing this. Our police, they're already working very hard to do this. Let's give them a vehicle to communicate it. Let's recognize our police for all that they're doing, all their positive efforts in anti-racism and anti-violence and keep encouraging it. I firmly believe that the more communication we have between the government and the community, the more trust we will have in our government and our police, and only good things come from that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Josh, next, please. So this is Carly Grant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. Let me see if I can start my video. Yep, hi. Yep, I'm Carly Grant. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, of Nine Greystone Lane. And I would like to speak in support of Hopkinton signing on to the Massachusetts Municipal Leaders' Pledge to take action on systemic racism. At all-town meeting in 2017, I stood up to propose the following language be amended to the preamble of our town charter. Quote, "The town of Hopkinton welcomes residents of all races, ethnicities, religions, abilities, gender identifications, and sexual orientations. The town of Hopkinton further is committed to providing a climate of safety and acceptance to all residents. The town of Hopkinton will actively address and resist acts of discrimination, bullying, or intimidation." This amendment was unanimously approved. The citizens of Hopkinton that you were elected by and that you represent voted to actively address and resist discrimination. The time has come to put our words into action. The M A P C pledge has already been signed by neighboring towns Ashland, Marlborough, and Framingham. Northborough and Westborough have issued their own formal statements and are forming committees to work actively toward racial justice. Signing the M A P C pledge provides a framework to help Hopkinton work toward achieving positive change through specific actions. Hopkinton is a wonderful town, but let's make our community even better by demonstrating a true commitment to the words in our town charter by signing on to the M A P C pledge. After all, it all starts here. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, next one, I believe, is Jonathan. Jonathan, you're up. Jonathan Melzer or Metzger? Not there?
Nope, I'm here. Sorry, I had to turn everything on. So hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Melzer from 14 Pike Street. And I'm also speaking in support of the M A P C pledge. I moved to Hopkinton six years ago, and I love being part of our close community, seeing how Hopkinton has come together and worked through any differences that we've had, which is why I want our town to continue to be the best it can be and make a difference by speaking out and taking a stand against racism. It's been incredible to see how members of our community, despite their differences, can work together to improve our town. Racism is not a partisan issue, and this pledge goes beyond politics or parties. It's an issue of human rights and common sense. Since the beginning of the recent protests, we've seen leaders across political spectrum speaking out against the racism that continues to impact our community and our country, moving past party politics to have a significant impact. I remember when George Floyd was killed and the video of his death began circulating and thinking to myself, so glad this kind of thing doesn't happen in Hopkinton. You don't have to worry about that thing happening, that kind of thing happening in our town. A few days later, I was reading the police report and I saw that somebody called the police because a person walking around their neighborhood didn't look like they belonged there. Turned out that they were a resident of that neighborhood. We see so many stories and videos of police being called on innocent people of color and how these interactions can quickly go wrong. Seeing that police report, I realized that this can happen anywhere, that these issues are closer to home than I thought. These issues are often more pervasive outside of Hopkinton, but we can still address these situations and grow from them. Hopkinton is already a safe, welcoming place to live with great law enforcement officers and officials that care about our community and want to keep us safe. Because of this, I want to see Hopkinton to continue to grow and be an example to the communities around us. Asher and Milford have already taken action by signing this pledge. And we can join them by coming together to figure out the causes behind these issues. All of us, no matter our political opinions, should all be concerned by what we've seen on the news and the ways that racism impacts our residents in our country. We can and should lead the way.
Jonathan, you got five seconds.
By committing to condemn racism, make sure our town continues to be the best place it can be for all our residents.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one, Josh? Let's see who the last one is. Mina.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Mina Kalshik. I live in 20 Carriage Hill Road, Hopkinton. I moved to Hopkinton in 2006, and it's been 14 years, and I love Hopkinton and I love the community that I'm a part of. I'm very proud of this town that I call home. I try to stay actively engaged and involved and give back to the community whenever possible. Today, I'll come before you to encourage you to consider the M A P C pledge on systemic racism and disparities and violence in law enforcement. I say this because our town and our police are already committed, as the other speakers have said. They're already committed to the principles and actions that are outlined by the, in the M A P C pledge. I have the highest regard for Chief Bennett and all the police officers in town. He's very forward-thinking, and the PD's strategic plan demonstrates that. It's very possible that we don't see any use of force or violence from our PD, and kudos to that. But this pledge will let the residents know that the PD is already taking steps that are outlined in the pledge and already addressing things even before they happen. This is only an acknowledgement that disparity exists, and each and every one of us needs to be aware of it. We need to work together to provide safe spaces for the, for community input and dialogue. Everyone needs to be heard, and everyone needs to be heard in a safe way. It's a pledge that the town is committed to promoting equity and identifying disparities in services. I also encourage our town manager Norman Kamalo to follow the other towns, Cambridge, Arlington, Newton, and even our neighbors, Framingham and Ashland, and many other towns that have signed this pledge. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, Sean, our COVID-19 update.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So today, we've seen a significant increase in the number of cases in town over the last two weeks. Today, we sit at 160 total cases. Seven of those are active, 140 of those have recovered. And then, you know, we're fortunate in that we have had no recent deaths. To that point, one of the reasons that we haven't seen an uptick in negative outcomes is because the average age of the cases has significantly dropped over the last seven months. So whereas back in March and April, we were looking at an average age of the residents that were ill was up in the 60s. And then during the summer, we dropped into the 40s. Now, the average age of residents falling ill is about 27. So, you know, we're just asking. Well, first off, these results are consistent with what we're seeing, both statewide and nationally. So as I said, our trends are no different. And we all expected to see an uptick in cases because as in past years, you know, fall brings the start of cold and flu season. So we expected to see a more significant uptick in respiratory illnesses, COVID being, you know, a similar disease. So we're asking our residents to really focus on, you know, the key defenses. It's following the basic rules such as distancing, wearing face coverings, having good hygiene, staying home when you're sick. And now, and probably most importantly, just avoiding large gatherings with people outside of your home. If we do this, we're confident that we can get our, and drive our numbers back down. I was talking to Casey today. We, we believe that we're going to pop into the yellow risk category tomorrow. Yeah, I think the results are going to come out tomorrow, but there's a chance the state's tweaking the data reporting, so it might not be until Thursday. But we believe that we're going to bump up into yellow, but then believe that if we can just buckle down a bit, we'll be right back down to green or unshaded the following week. Moving on, you know, we're permitting Halloween. We just want to do so intelligently. We want the parents to be smart about it, to really focus on providing their, their children and that nuclear family an experience. And, and we believe that we can provide an experience that's similar to, you know, a typical Halloween. We just need families to be distanced, wearing face coverings. We need the kids to wash their hands prior to going out. They should have sanitizer on them. We want the residents that are participating in Halloween to illuminate their, either their driveways or their porches, so that people will know who's interested in participating. Obviously, if the lights off, those homes will be left alone and those residents, their privacy and, you know, their wishes to not participate will be respected. You know, we're encouraging residents that want to participate, to be creative, you know, be it, you know, using a PVC pipe down the railing to deliver candy, you know, you know, whatever they want to do. But at the end of the day, we just need people to stay distanced, stay protected, and, and really to enjoy themselves. Because if we continue to see an uptick as they're predicting in the country, at least we want to be billed, provide a fairly normal Halloween experience. If you don't want to participate in Halloween, like the Faith Community Church is sponsoring an event. It's a, a mobile trunk-or-treat event that's being held, I believe, next Saturday. Both the state Health Department, Department of Labor, and our local health department have approved the activities that they proposed. They've got a good plan, and I have faith that they will execute on that plan. We want to discourage any Halloween parties, especially any of those that would be in violation of the governor's gathering order. So any parties that are over 25 people, you know, are in violation or a direct violation of the governor's gathering order. And, you know, when we look at the data on where our uptick in cases are coming from, both in the Commonwealth and in the town, it's from large gatherings, it's from work. Those that are coming home from work or returning home from a large gathering are causing spread in the household. We're doing a good job at controlling that, in limiting that spread to the household only and not to the community. And we're seeing a fair amount of spread coming, a fair amount of infection coming into the town that's directly related to outdoor athletics, or actually related to athletics. The outdoor athletics haven't been identified as a major source. It's really the indoor athletics that are, that have been most problematic in the town and throughout the Commonwealth. And I believe the state will be making an announcement at the end of the week about sports in general. And then lastly, you know, we just want people to be smart about, you know, travel right now. We, we actually have one resident who's under quarantine after an airplane exposure. You know, as we're preparing for Thanksgiving and Christmas, it's really going to be important that we be planful, that we're preparing. You know, in addition to preparing your Thanksgiving dinner, you really need to, you're really going to need to focus on planning your guest list. You know, depending on how the state progresses, if we're in, in the, if we're a red state, you know, people might not be able to commute to Massachusetts without having to quarantine to go back. We need people to be compliant with the governor's travel order. We want people to get tested before they come into the, the home from an outside state, because we don't want to, or we want to limit the, the introduction of illness into the town. So again, we're just asking people to really be planful, and we'll be putting out communications, you know, to this extent, as we get closer to the holidays. And that's what the two part-time staff that we just hired, when they're not assisting us with case management, contact tracing, they'll be focused on marketing and the production of infographics and general communication with the communication team consisting of Josh, Police Department, and Fire Department. That said, that's it for me. Do you have any questions?
Our fund's waiting to get back in the meeting just to.
So I don't have any questions. Josh, I don't know if you heard Amy or not, but her friend's trying to get back into the meeting. If you could see if you could help him out there. Board members, do you have any, any questions for Sean? Mr. Herr?
I don't have any questions. It certainly seems like we're starting to head back up here, and we just need to be careful. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. Mary Jo LaFrenier, are you on? Are you on? No. Yeah. Ms. Ritter Bush?
I just wanted to thank, thanks for the update, and I'm glad that we can do some sort of Halloween, even if it's not the usual.
It'll be, it'll be similar.
I have been on. I just was muted.
Oh, sorry about that, Mary Jo. Do you have any questions?
That's okay. No, I'm sorry to hear that we might go yellow. I'm glad to hear that Halloween is going to be okayed. My neighbor had decided to do it, and they decided to get candy bar wrappers that just cut it and dumped them in a bowl, so they're not touched by the person giving them out. And then hand wipes for each kid before they put their hand in the bowl and takes them out. So, and they're already wrapped, and so I think we're going to be okay. And I would suggest everybody do something like that.
Mr. Nasrullah, are you back in?
I'm back. Thank you. No questions. I do want to say, you know, thank you for everything you're doing, Sean. It's, it sounds like, you know, we're all suffering from COVID fatigue and starting to let our guards down. And I think we all really need to keep it up because we can get through this if we, if we just practice these, you know, these measures.
Yep. So Sean, you're doing a great job as a selectman. I thank you. And as a nurse in that, in that field, I thank you. And as a taxpayer and town resident, I thank you for all the work that you guys are doing, both of you, or everybody involved. So please pass along our congratulations. So thank you very much, Sean.
Well, thank you.
Moving on to, the board will recognize two employees. The first is Carl Harris, who retired from the Fire Department on October 1 and has been with the town for 31 years. 26 as a full-time firefighter, five times, five years as a call firefighter. Josh, if you could, I believe Mr. Harris is on, so let's make sure that Carl is live. Mr. Harris, are you with us? He's muted. Is the, is Chief Slammin on?
He's an attendee. Yeah, okay.
Great. So I guess, I guess I'll start. So Carl, so 31 years went by pretty quick. I know a couple, I have a lot of little known. I know a couple, I have a lot of little known facts, most I cannot disclose here. Mr. Harris. One is Carl and I started on the call department the very same day. There was, I believe it was me and Carl and Mr. Gross and a few other all-stars. Mr. Terosian was on that. Go way back to one of the, one of the requirements to get on was. Behind your back. Things have changed significantly in the past, Mr. Harris. I will go on record by saying that Carl is, Carl has my admiration as a firefighter, as a colleague, as a person and as a friend. Carl has, has given back to the town of Hopkinton more than anybody, with the exception of Chief Slammon on this, on this board, you know, on this call nose. You know, we thank you for all the work that you've done. We thank Barbara for allowing you to be part of, be part of our town for as long as you were. Carl, you mean, I, I had planned on coming here and roasting you. I'm not gonna do that. You have earned my respect. You're a great man. The town, it's a tremendous loss, and you're in my, my thoughts. And Barb, you're in my thoughts as well for a lot more reasons than, than what most people on here understand. We love you as a, as, as a, as a couple, as a person, for the wringer that you've been through in your lives. And I'm proud to call you a friend. I am sad to lose you as a firefighter, as a lieutenant. I had planned on going into some of our funny calls and some of our funny times that we've had at Cold Water Rescue Drills and things like that, but I won't. I will over a beer at some point. I know you're down in Key West, not enjoying your retirement. Congratulations from the bottom of my heart. I'm very proud to be able to be sitting, sitting here and appreciating you as a selectman for all the hard work and accomplishments that you've done in your life and in your career with the Hopkins Fire Department. So as one board member here, I, from the bottom of my heart, I say congratulations. You'll be missed, and we love you both.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear us, but thank you very much.
You can, you can. So I will open it up to the board. Mr. Nasrullah?
Oh, I just want to say thirty-one years is a long time, and I think we're gonna miss you. That's a lot, an awful lot of institutional knowledge and just dedication to the town. I, I thank you for all you've done, and I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Herr?
Brendan and Erfan have said it well, Carl. Thank you for everything you've done for the town. You will be missed, and if you're in Key West, I'd encourage you to stay there as long as you can.
We are in Key West, and it's beautiful.
Good for you. That's great. Enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Lefrenier?
I want to say thank you to Carl and to his whole family, because having come from a, a a family of three firefighters and had, you know, they, it's a whole family business. They have very late holiday dinners sometimes, or, or none at all, or, or people are in and out. It's just, it's a whole, it's a whole family contributes to the firefighter. And we very much appreciate everything you've done for the town, Carl. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ritter-Bush?
I'll just echo what everyone else said. Thank you very much for your service. I had looked you up on the internet and saw that you got an award in twenty sixteen for helping out in New Hampshire. Anyway, we really appreciate all you do, and I hope, wish you wonderful retirement. I hope the COVID ends soon, so you can have more of a big celebration.
Thank you very much.
Chief Slammon, I see that you're on. Do you have any parting words for this gentleman?
Thank you, Chair Tedstone. I just thought it was, need your comments that you both started the same day, and Carl went thirty-one years, and I think you went thirty-one days. So I'm just, anyways. What I want to say is, thank you, Carl. Just quickly, Carl's reputation was a good firefighter. We got to do a lot of burns when we were young firefighters. That was great in Hopkinton. His crews love working for him. Amy just mentioned him and Tom Poyer literally rescued a police officer up in New Hampshire. Just amazing. And let's see, I want to thank Carl for all the, he put together one of our first videos that just showed the whole town as a PR, lots of fire pictures, and us going to the great Center School Fire that, Chairman, you'll remember that one. And
I still have blisters on my feet from that one, Chief.
Then finally, just, you know, Carl, the family with Barbara came to the fire station, and then he also brought the fire station to his family. So appreciate that. That's a big deal in the firehouse. Nice work. I'm jealous of you down there in Key West. Hope to see you soon, my friend. Hi, Barbara.
So I guess in closing, I can't be completely soft and mushy on you, Mr. Harris. You are this generation's Bill Hamilton. We, we, I look forward to, to, to having some type of formal retirement party for you and sitting up there with Mr. Terosian emceeing it. And, but you're awesome. We've had a lot of great times over the years, and the Chief Slammon, what he just said, that, you know, the thirty-one years, I was thirty-one days. I will remember that on his next review, perhaps. Boss, and that is gross insubordination. So I look forward to our next review. And that's, and for the, for everybody out there watching, if you didn't get it, the slammin' thing is a joke, so let's not rip me on the internet about that. So, but Carl, Barbara, you guys are awesome. We love you. Best wishes. Have a rum drink down there for me. And Carl, if you, if you get a chance to ride in a, in a red Firebird, let's, let's leave it at that. Love you guys. Best wishes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Slammon, don't worry about Brendan. We'll take care of things.
Next is Janet McKay. Oh, another townie that's retiring on October thirty-one, has been with the town for twenty-four years. Janet studied accounting at Newbury College and was originally hired on the town as an interdepartmental secretary. She later transitioned to assistant town accountant, a position she has held for several years. Mr. Kamala, why don't you lead the, the charge on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. How do I say this without tearing up? I, I am so proud to have worked with Janet over the last twelve years. I have presence here at Town Hall, brought smiles to her colleagues, brought joy, the customers that came to the window, and also was a very able representative of what we call excellency in public service. In instances where we needed somebody to bring us together, to celebrate, to cheer us up, Janet was always part of that solution. I also recall Janet's commitment to our finance team. It needs to be said, she lived through all transitions and worked with all forms of anybody you can call Chris in this world. And she was able to do that because of her commitment to the town. Her dedication to the success of our finance team. And I also need to say, she sacrificed a lot to continue to be our friends, to be part of our finance team. There was a moment where she was ready to transition over to the town clerk's office, the assistant town clerk. And after several conversations, she did say it was her best decision to continue to work in the finance department. And I thank you for that, Janet. Because after that, you helped us through many, many, many other challenges. We will certainly miss you. We, we envy what you are now going to be able to do, spend more time with your family. And with those words, I would bless you with joy, with good health and prosperity as you begin your new, the new phase in your life called retirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norm. Thank you.
That was what very nicely put, Mr. Kamalo. Mr. Nasrullah?
You're muted.
Very well said, Mr. Kamalo. You know, I just love seeing the, the story of somebody who, who starts and works their way up through the, through the ranks, and now I'm sad to see you leave. I will say, though, that, you know, with all this COVID stuff, we've all had so much family time. So if you're choosing to get even more, I'm like, wow. That's another challenge that you're taking on for her. We're gonna miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Herr?
Well, I first started hanging around in Town Hall for this board anyway, in two thousand and seven, I was first elected. And Janet was there smiling then, and she's here tonight smiling as usual. And again, I always love to see Janet in the office, always had a big smile on her face, always very willing to help. She went through two town managers, I think. We got a transition from one town manager to another, which was not easy. She's been through, obviously, a couple of finance directors over the years, which is never easy to go, you know, through those changes. She always did it with a smile on her face, always had a very positive attitude. And you will be missed, Janet. I've always appreciated when you said hello, and appreciate your support over the years, and wish you the best in your retirement. Good luck and have fun. I'm sure you will.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Herr. Ms. Lefrenier?
Well, I, I think I was just on my way out of Town Hall when Janet came in. And I have, I've always thought, and I still do, that she was the consummate professional. She was always in hap- happy, or at least with a smile on her face, that's true. But every time I've ever had to deal with her as an assessor, as, as a fellow employee, or as a friend outside of Town Hall, she has been a wonderful person to know. And like I said, consummate professional, and she will be very much missed in Hopkinton.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
We'll see you other place.
I'm not leaving Hopkinton.
Ms. Ritter-Bush?
So I don't know Janet very well, but it's very important to have people that are good with numbers and pay attention to detail. And I will say, the Historic District Commission was very much appreciative last year when we had, needed a quick turnaround for a check for the registry of deeds after we got our Attorney General approval for the Claflin House Historic District. So thank you for that. Wish you wonderful retirement.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
So Janet, I've known you for quite a while. You, you come from a family of, of, of people dedicated to giving not just public service, but service to the town of Hopkinton. Your brother was a, was a cop in town for a long time, worked his way up through the ranks as the, all the way up to the police chief, and one of the, one of the most respected police chiefs in that industry. You have done the same thing in your industry, and these, the, these other board members speak of your smile. One of the, you know, we, we've all gone through a lot in this town, a lot of change. And I can remember after I had won that, that first election, I came into Town Hall and, and it was your face that I most remember the first time with a big smile and saying congratulations, and you'll do great, and your words of encouragement, and that smile has, I mean, that started with me, I don't know, forty-five years ago, fifty years ago, and, and it's, it's, it's gone right through. So you know, we talk about institutional knowledge. You can't, you can't get institutional knowledge from, from a book. You get that from on-the-job experience and from doing the, the great job that you've done. So much like I will say on Mr. Harris, the town is losing a, a wealth of knowledge and a heck of a, a person as an employee, but it allows you to, it allows you to be a heck of a person outside of Town Hall, and I look forward to if these places ever open up, potentially seeing you around and having a Fresca or two with you, and sharing my thanks that way.
Sounds great. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, Janet. Great. Your, your work means a lot to us, so thank you very much. Congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
I will. Thank you. Thank you all.
I know you will. All right. And moving on, I guess that's it. I thought that we had one other, but I guess that's it. So we will move on to the consent agenda. The board will consider approving the consent agenda, considering of number one, approving, approval of the minutes for the September fifteen and twenty-nine, twenty-twenty meetings. And number two, change of manager for the one-ten grill to Robert Nielsen. Any members want to pull any item out for a separate vote?
So Chair, I've moved to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nasrullah, how do you vote?
Ms. Ritter, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Lefrenier, yes.
Ms. Ritter-Bush?
Ritter-Bush, yes.
Tedstone, yes. Appointments. So Sam Docnovich has requested appointment to the Council on Aging. There is one vacancy for a term expiring June thirty of twenty-three. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, I will request a motion to appoint Samuel Docnovich to the Council of Aging to a term expiring June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nasrullah, how do you vote?
Ms. Ritter, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes. Thank you, Sam.
Ms. Lefrenier? Ms. Ritter-Bush?
Ritter-Bush, yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. So that carries. Mortgage and debt relief programs. The board will receive information on opportunities to provide relief to Hopkins residents. Mr. Kamalo, could you please describe the potential programs, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The two programs that we are introducing tonight is why Hopkinton is a great community. We, we actually through these programs, advancing what I believe best illustrates why we have been very successful over many, many, many years in building community. The first program relates to funding that is available under the CARES Act. Now, the second program, and I will let Elaine give you more details on it, is a request that you support an application to CPC that will make funding available to support emergency housing. Let me speak to the program that falls under the CARES Act funding. Suffice to say, the program that I'm presenting tonight would not have been possible without the hard and honest efforts by Tim O'Leary, our CFO, Ben Sweeney, our senior accounting manager, Chris Hamon, our treasurer. As I said in my opening remarks, this initiative is consistent with the Hopkinton mission, one that promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. It is also consistent with the directives that I have received from the Select Board, namely to always pursue opportunities that would allow every citizen, every resident here in Hopkinton to continue to develop our community. Adults surrounding communities, including Holystone, Ashland, Belmont, and Newton, have initiated similar programs. And the town's finance team has reviewed those programs and has developed an approach that works for Hopkinton. One that ensures that Hopkinton is compliant with the CARES Act regulations, and also ensures that the limited funding available flows to those with demonstrated need. I should also point out that we would not have embarked on this program had we not received strong indications from some of our town departments regarding this need. And also, we were approached by a resident who pointed out that our surrounding towns were pursuing similar initiatives. Let me briefly review the elements of this temporary program with you. To comply with the CARES Act restrictions, the program will be available to those who pay rent and who make principal and interest payments on home mortgages. Obviously, there may be a question as to will we, will this program cover real estate taxes? The state has made it clear that real estate taxes would not be covered under this program. The CARES Act also requires that any recipients be able to demonstrate an earnings loss connected to COVID-19. To meet this criteria, the Towns Program would require applicants to document a 20% earnings loss due to the COVID-19 crisis. Or for Hopkinton seniors enrolled in the Towns Property Tax Workoff Program, any loss of property tax workoff opportunity. This is one key driver that really pushed us to look for ways to move this initiative forward and bring it to, to your attention. Namely, again, the opportunity to address our seniors who are enrolled in the Towns Property Tax Workoff Program, who have been unable to do that work because of COVID-19. The program will be means tested with respect to income and with respect to the amount households can have in checking, savings, and investments. Initial funding is targeted at $100,000, but that funding level is subject to review and adjustment after the application period is completed. Applicants can apply for up to 50% of either rent or mortgage principal and interest payments for the payments due for November and December 2020, not to exceed $4,000 per household. But the final amount awarded will be based on available funds and the number of approved applications received at or below $4,000 per household. The Town plans to advertise this opportunity vigorously and to accept applications between October 22 and November 10, with applications to be reviewed by the Hopkinton Finance Department and with a goal of issuing awards on November 25. Let me assure you that the Town has made excellent and efficient use of the $1.6 million in CARES Act funding that has been provided to Hopkinton. Expenditures already made and planned include 36% of CARES Act funding, technology improvements to support remote learning and operations, 20% of funding for facilities modifications related to COVID-19, 14% for PPE purchases, 11% for other allowable school salary costs, 5% for cleaning supplies, 4% for contracted medical services, and the 7% is earmarked for the program that I just described. As program funding needs a December 30 expiration date, and as the financial impacts of COVID-19 continue to threaten many in our community, this particular rent and mortgage support program seems like a worthy and timely use for some of the Town's remaining funding. And at this point, I will take any questions you may have, or perhaps you want to hear from Elaine on the CPC, and then we can combine the questions. Mr. Chair, your call.
Mr. Tedstone had to step away. I had to address something at work. So I'll be stepping in his place. I, I would, I would welcome Elaine's input here or comments.
Thank you. The second program that we're pursuing is an application to the CPC for Community Preservation Act funding for the next fiscal year. So there is an assumption there will still be a need next fiscal year. And that would fund renters and homeowners. Homeowners who reside in and own deed restricted affordable housing units, and also renters in affordable units and those in market rate units. And the program tentatively would cover 70% of monthly payments, would be available for a three-month period. And there would be income qualification required where households would have to earn 80% or less of the area median income. And this would be to, to qualify for the CPA restrictions on preservation and support for affordable housing. And we have indication from social servants agencies and town departments that we do have households that are in need of such assistance today. And we believe that they'll still be in need next year, although it'd be great if there wasn't. And I just wanted to indicate that this was developed with the support of the Youth and Family Services Department, who was working hard to identify and, and serve the needs of the community. So this application would be submitted to the CPC, would go through the public hearing process, and would be voted at the next annual town meeting. If recommended.
Thank you. Board members, does, does anyone have any questions? Ms. Ritter Bush?
I don't think I really have any questions, just that this sounds like a good program that is, is in need this year. So I would definitely be supportive.
I'm gonna go in reverse order, since I started with Ms. Ritter Bush. So Ms. LaFreniere?
I. My question was with the senior workoff program relief.
Yes.
I am a member of the senior workoff program. Of course, I've been working, but I just was wondering what that entailed for the seniors.
That's, that's a good question, Mary Jo. However, because you're part of the program, you may consider recusing yourself from the discussion.
Oh. Okay. I would.
Mr. Herr?
I think that, as Amy mentioned, this is a good program to consider for this year. Obviously, it's something that Town Meeting will make the final determination on. But based on what I've heard, I would support it and encourage those that that can benefit from it to understand it and be ready, because I assume Hopkinton in general will support it come next May, too.
Now, I'd just like to add, I think what, what Ms. Ritter Bush and Mr. Herr both said is completely applicable. I would like to just commend staff for, for taking the initiative and trying to, trying to find some relief for, for our town. So with that, I request a motion to, to support the application to CPC for COVID-19-related housing, emergency housing relief.
So moved.
Second.
How do we vote, Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
LaFreniere?
LaFreniere, yes.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
And Nasrullah, yes. So that carries.
Mr. Kamalo, I think it would probably help Mary Jo if she just did not have a vote cast on that issue.
It's an abstain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
LaFreniere, would you like to abstain?
Yes.
Okay. So that carries three, three, three yeses and one abstination.
Yeah. If, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, I want to thank the board, the support, for your support tonight. And to be clear, yes, the CPC application will go through the town meeting process. The program that is falling under the CARES Act funding, the decision authority lies with the town manager. And I presented it to you tonight to get your consensus viewpoint and to get your support.
Well, from what I heard tonight, you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, the means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption. The Select Board is authorized to implement limited property tax exemptions for qualifying seniors each year. The exemptions may be awarded within a range of 50% to 200% with the maximum state circuit breaker income tax credit from the previous year. Last year, the board approved the maximum exemption of 200%, and 33 people were going to take advantage of the program. For this year, the board has received recommendations from John Neese, the principal assessor. Mr. Neese and Mr. Kamalo, would you like to talk about your recommendations for 2021?
Mr. Chair, John, I'll defer to you.
Josh, I think you might need to liven him up.
No, if I see him on there.
There we go.
This is Josh. I've just enabled somebody logged in as the public meeting. John, is that you?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, okay to proceed?
Okay to proceed?
Okay. So this is the means-tested senior exemption that was new to the town of Hopkinton last year. The circuit breaker amount currently is $1,130. You need to take a vote on selecting a percentage from 50% to 200% or anywhere in between. There are only a few communities in Hopkinton that, I'm sorry, a few communities in the state that have this program. Hopkinton is one of them. We had a special home rule petition through the legislature in an effort to provide some additional relief to our seniors. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, do you have any questions? Mr. Herr?
I don't have any questions. I think the program first coming to us last year was well received by the community as a whole. Even obviously those that did not participate in it directly were very supportive of it. And I don't think this year would be any different. In fact, I would think this year the, the, you know, the community, the general will of the community would be even stronger favor of something like this to help our fellow citizens now. So I'm all in, and I think Hopkinton is too.
Ms. LaFreniere?
I think that this is a really good program. And I would, it's not going to be much of a difference this year between last year to go with the whole 200%. So that would be my recommendation.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
I basically had the same thoughts. I just want to confirm that Mr. Neese thinks that we should go ahead and do the 200% again.
Mr. Neese?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do you recommend that we continue with the 200% again, like last year?
Well, I do, but it's really a Select Board decision, you know, as to the percentage amount that they would like to select.
Okay. Well, I think it sounds like a good program, and I would support the 200 again.
So I, I do have one question. Just, I mean, so we're selecting between 50 and 200%. Last year, it amounted to about 2 cents extra, you know, as the, as the effect of it. So I know it's difficult to predict, but do we have a sense as to how much it's gonna, you know, this would cost?
We do. So the projection is again about 2 cents on the, on the residential tax rate. So this is an exemption only within the residential class. So the people who do not get the exemption make up the difference for the people who do get the exemption. Last year, you will remember that that changed the tax rate from $16.80 to $16.82 for the residential payers. And we are projecting something similar this year in terms of a, in terms of an impact. We can't know specifically what that number is until we are almost ready to set the tax rate and do the, do all of the calculations.
Okay, thank you. So, board members, we need to pick percentage. Ms. LaFreniere suggested the 200%. I would support that. Is there anyone, anyone who objects to that? Or any discussion on this? In that case, I request a motion for the Select Board to adopt the exemptions at 200% of the, for the calendar year 2019 circuit breaker income tax credit for the calendar year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
How do we vote? And any discussion? Hearing none. How do we vote, Mr. Herr?
Herr, yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
LaFreniere, yes.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
And Nasrullah is a yes. So that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate everything you're doing. Our next, our next item is, I'm gonna hand this back to our chair. He is back to join us. So we're now on the board discussion of the MAPC pledge and the rules of procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Nasrullah, for covering for me for that few minutes. So the number of agenda items, board discussion member agenda items. Number one, MAPC pledge. Number two, rules of procedure and public forum policy. The board will discuss a few agenda items suggested by members. Number one, MAPC pledge. The first is a request to sign on to the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC pledge on systemic racism, which was also included in our packet. We also received a letter with comments from Town Council. At this meeting, we will review, discuss, and offer suggestions relative to signing the pledge and consider setting a date for follow-up discussion. Board members, what are your thoughts? Mr. Nasrullah?
Um. Well, I, I'm encouraged by the MAPC pledge. I think there's, there's a lot in there. And I think, I think we're due. I think we've heard from a number of members of our town that would like to, like us to, to take this pledge. I had a couple of thoughts on it, though. One thing is that while we are implementing it, I mean, implementing the actions taken in the pledge, I would like us to, to be working with our police department, who I think has done an exemplary job in, in addressing this, and, and they're already addressing it. So I think that, my only comment is that I think that they would, you know, bringing the police into the discussion is critical. And that's how I'd like to proceed.
Okay. Mr. Herr?
I read the pledge earlier today, and directionally, I agree with it 100% directionally. I am concerned that a couple of the clauses, however, would create the need, possibly create the need for a bargaining situation with the, with our dedicated police officers in town. And I want to make sure that we don't open up a situation with the collective bargaining unit that wasn't anticipated, nor is it fair to do so, that sort of understanding it and letting our, our, again, our dedicated officers know why we might have to open it up. So, Mr. Kamalo, I think I would need some more information specific to how that pledge would impact the collective bargaining process in town with our officers.
Okay. Is that all you have, Mr. Herr?
All I have, I, I couldn't say I'd support signing it until I understand what the collective bargaining situation would be. So that may be something we have to look into with the Town Council and Labor Council before we finalize.
Yep. Okay. Ms. LaFreniere?
Well, I have to, I have to agree. I, I stand behind the pledge. I stand behind the, the thoughts of the pledge and, and the reasoning for it. But as I looked at the recommendation from Town Council, it does say that we should have a meeting or talk with the Labor Council and the Chief of Police about the difficulties in negotiations, et cetera. And we are not, we're not a civil service town as far as the police department goes. And a lot of the things in the pledge refer to civil service agreements and that sort of thing. So I, I, I'm all for it. And I think that we need to, we need to look at those things and we need to, we need to look at those things and correct them or bring our own pledge like, like Westboro and a few of the other towns have, just with a few little differences. And we are going to discuss this again at another meeting. So I think in the meantime, that's what we have to clear up.
All right, Ms. Ritter Bush?
Yeah, I think like the others, I'm generally supportive of all the concepts in the pledge. But I agree, we need to follow town council's advice and make sure, maybe we should have a modified version for Hopkinton if we were to go forward and sign something. I would also like to recommend that we send this out to all department heads for comments too, in case they had any concerns and would want, would be comfortable with us signing this, particularly the personnel committee and human resources. And just make sure, yeah, because we, other towns have done their own version that's more custom to their town. And I think we should feel free to do that if that is more comfortable for us.
Okay, and as far as I go, so I will agree with everything that the board has said. I think it's sad that as a society, we have to put all these core values into writing. But apparently, apparently, public wants us to do that. I stand committed to knowing that. So I look at number four on the, on the principles. We will work to address racism within law enforcement in a proactive, intentional and consistent manner. I, I'm pretty sure we already do that. I'm pretty sure we already do most of this. You know, we will make it a priority to take action now as local governments. I mean, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but these are all things that I guess we just take for granted that people that are professionals in their departments already do. You know, I, I believe that society has a, not a pot, but a cauldron that's being stirred by both polar ends of the political world. The, my, what I really want to focus on is our police department. We're, you know, we're number one. We were number, the number one safest town in city in the country two years ago. Last year, we're number two. We just don't see brace, that, that we have a racism issue in our, in our enforcement, in our police department. Matter of fact, I'm positive that we don't. And, you know, in a proactive, intentional and consistent manner, you know, let's say, these are all things that Chief Bennett and Chief Slaman and, and Mr. Kamalu and Mr. Westerling and all of our department heads in town. I think a lot of this stuff is understood and the fact it's, it's, it's sad as a society that we have to put this into, into writing. But people want it in writing. So I guess we'll, we'll look at it. And I think the board will, will all be able to, to chip in and put in what we think is right and take out what we think is wrong and run it by town council and then the board and make a presentation. This certainly does, it is something that we will, we will work on down the road.
Brendan, you're muted.
Sorry about that. My phone fell on my keyboard. Rules of procedure and public forum policy. The board adopted a public forum policy in two thousand and seven and the rules of procedure in two thousand and nine. We will be talking about potential updates to each of these. And if members have suggested changes, they can be compiled and drafted by staff for review and approval at an upcoming meeting. Town council reviewed both of these documents and offered some suggestions. Board members, what are your thoughts? Mr. Nasrula?
Well, I reviewed town council's comments on it. I thought he had a lot of, you know, a lot of valid items to talk about. Are we going to go through everything right now? Or is this, is our plan to start the discussion?
I think that we will, if we have any suggestion changes, we can, we can compile them. We don't have to do those publicly. We can compile those and, and have staff draft it and approve it by the, by the board.
Okay, so the one, one change, I know we don't have to say it publicly, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna. One, one thing I noted was in the public forum portion of our, our meetings. It is intended for residents to raise their voice and opinions. So I think that's something that we would want to kind of follow up, you know, follow through on. But, and it also states that it would be nice if we got those comments in advance. I think that, that we might want to sharpen that up a little bit as well.
Okay, Mr. Herr?
So in two thousand and seven, I was on the board with Mrs. Pratt and Mrs. Kramer, who I think were the key authors of the public forum policy at the time, as I was new. And I think in general, the public forum policy has served the community well since two thousand and seven. I realize that some have had some different opinions recently, but we've also had different opinions in the time of COVID. And we're doing these Zoom calls and we're not turning our mic on, turning our mic on and figuring out how to turn on our camera and turn off our camera and yada, yada, yada. So I just think it's a weird time to be feeling like something's not working very well, when in fact it's worked extremely well for the, all the years I've been around. And I just don't think now is the time to make a change to a policy that, you know, works in a normal meeting. I get this isn't the normal time, but this isn't going to, this isn't going to last forever. And I don't feel the need to change it. I think Mrs. Pratt and Mrs. Kramer did a good job at that way back when and it still works well. The same thoughts, and that we're not there yet, but I have the same thoughts with respect to the board's policies and procedures. I signed that one as I mentioned and as the chair way back then. And I think all that works well too. I don't think we should be hitting the panic button because we've had some rough meetings during the COVID situation and what we can put up with here. You know, I'm not in Vermont right now. I'm in my living room. What I can do with my screen here, I can create all kinds of imagery and we can all kind of manipulate stuff differently when we're doing these online meetings. And I don't think we should try to manipulate rules and regulations that work extremely well for a long time. Thank you.
Ms. Lefernier?
Well, I noticed that at the beginning of the meeting tonight, we did ask the people who called in to give us their name and to let us know who they were. And I really, really feel very strongly, people who come before us give us their name and address. People who get up at town meeting have to give us their name and address. And I think it is a sidelight of COVID that this happened. And I'm, I'm sorry about that, but I think we have to extend this to our phone, the people who call in to give opinions and to call into the board that they should have to give their names and address also.
So Ms. Lefernier, are you implying that everybody that comes to us before us on the board should be from, for public comment? Should live in Hopkinton?
No, but they should give their name and address. That's all. No, anybody can come before us. I have no, no restrictions at all as to who comes before us, but just that they should have to give their name and address.
Yeah, so, okay.
The chair, if I could say something. Our, our policy now is confined, the public forum section is confined to residents. So it is for, for people who live in Hopkinton. That's, that's how it's written presently.
Is that true, Mr. Kamalo? Not that I doubt you, Mr. Nasrula, but so.
I noticed that also, that maybe we should change it to say the public instead of residents. I don't know.
So I, I know that, that we have in the past, since I've been on the board, we've allowed, let's say, for example, Rob Phipps to get up and speak on numerous things and Rob Phipps doesn't live in town. He used to, but he doesn't. And we've allowed people to come in and, and simply state their name and address. You know, the, the accusation of that open meeting law violation, it, it was not, there was nothing on that that was anonymous. That, and, and that was shown by the, by the people went, got that address and wrote handwritten letters to the people who wrote those letters. So there was nothing, those people simply didn't want their names and address put out there because they were arguing against someone with a history of violent crimes and didn't want that to come out and, and potentially have those people go to their house. So.
That's, that's not who they were arguing against. They were arguing against a elected town official. They were requesting the elected town official to be removed from her office. And that in itself should have been something that was brought up in executive session because we have an executive session part that says that anybody who is being brought up like that and given, and their name being brought up should be done in an executive session in front of the board, particularly they were asking for the removal of a person. And not follow the right procedure. When they mentioned the name, we should have stopped it right then and there and said, look, you know, write us a letter, send us an email. We have to take care of this sort of thing in executive session and we, and we should have.
So they didn't call, so just a point of procedures, they, they weren't calling for us to remove. They were calling for that person to resign. So that's a massive difference in wording right there. However, I'm not going to get back into the weeds and rehash it.
No, I don't want to get back into the weeds.
I questioned, I questioned the uproar. I, so I know that the people that, that were the proponents of this were stating this was for the, for the best of the town. I question if this were somebody that wasn't a close friend, if they would have taken such a, such an adamant stance on it. But that's neither here nor there. That's, that's subjective, not objective, and it's nothing that we can debate.
Right.
Ms. Lefernier, do you have anything else on that?
No, I don't.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Yeah, I have a few things. I put them in writing to Elaine today so she can compile them. But, you know, change board of selectmen to select board throughout. Change the email address from, I think it says selectmen at hopkington.org and it really should be selectboard@hopkingtonma.gov. I would also ask that we consider maybe making a specific email for public comment called public comment@hopkingtonma.gov. Because I've heard from residents that they've emailed the select board like on Friday before noon and they were surprised that their comments didn't get in the packet. So just maybe we can make it more crystal clear that you're writing to this address if you're trying to do public comment. I've mentioned this already. I think we should change the word residents to the public throughout because we routinely let members of the public who are not residents speak. Maybe they're organizing an event or they own a business but don't live here. I think it should be the public. I do think that speakers should begin their remarks by saying their name and their residence and affiliation. So I would advocate for that. And then I noticed that NADAC and the school committee, they had a lawsuit recently about complaints about town employees and officials. And so NADAC and then Hopkanning School Committee following suit changed their, the wording of their public forum policy after they, they lost a lawsuit about it actually. They did not want someone to speak about their NADAC superintendent. So they prevented someone from speaking, but apparently that violated their free speech. So anyway, so the Hopkanning School Committee and NADAC School Committee have new wording that I think we should consider adopting. So it says all speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. And that individual or representative should be reminded of the public nature of a select board meeting and will be advised against specifically naming residents or town employees in their comments. And the public comments shall concern items that are not on the select board agenda, but which are within the scope of the school select board's authority. Therefore, any comments involving staff or volunteers must concern policies, budget or, or performance of the town manager or other responsibilities of the select board. Another line that they have in the, in the NADAC and Hopkanning School Committees is large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks and select a spokesperson at public comment. I think that would be a good idea to add. And our policy asks for the comments to be Friday before noon. And I don't know, I don't think we usually get comments Friday before noon. So I don't know if we're really still following that or we want to. So I was going to suggest, oh, and then Elaine mentioned too, that town hall closes at two on Fridays now. I didn't use to when this was written. So maybe if someone wants to include something in the packet, they should be told to submit it on Thursday or Wednesday. Be more realistic.
So, Ms. Ritter Bush, if I'm hearing you correctly, I'm hearing you say that public comment should be regulated up to three or four days prior to the meeting? So someone, so if somebody's going to get up and speak at public comment, it's, it's because they've put something forth?
No, but that's what the policy currently says. If they want to speak at public comment, they should do it by Friday. And that's, people don't usually do that.
I, I have no problem with that. I just, if we, if we do that, if we make that as policy, just know that if something comes up over a weekend or something comes up, then we're, you know, we're, we're not allowing it to, to, to come up on our Tuesday meeting.
So I actually, at the reverse, I think it, we're not following that now. So.
It already is our policy. So we have to make changes and see what we want to do.
The policy as it stands, it, the last line in it, the board will allow for residents to speak during open session without prior notification. However, prior, prior notification may be, may help to facilitate progress on the issues you're concerned. So I think, I think what we're saying is, you know, it would be nice to try to get it in early. But if there is an emergency or something happens over the weekend, then yeah, they're welcome to speak. One thing I wanted to touch on that Ms. Ritter Bush said is that she would like it to be revised, say, members of the public. I think that we need some kind of nexus, some kind of connection to the town. We don't want to just open it up to just any, anyone. I think there's got to be some kind of connection to the town. If somebody works here, somebody obviously lives here or even doing a project here. Sure, but do, do we really want it open to anyone?
I, I thought, I understood that that might be a legal requirement, that our policy might be outdated, that we can't restrict it to just residents.
So from what I understand, the legal aspect of this is we don't even have to have it. And that whole thing kind of blew up a month or two ago with, with Ms. Kramer, Ms. Kramer and Mrs. Hayes and those people. I had discussions with Mr. Kamalu and Mr. Mayerys that I was thinking of while this COVID state of emergency executive order is in effect where we're not meeting face to face. I was going to suspend public comment and I was, I was given pretty good examples and reasons by Mr. Kamalu and Mr. Mayerys that that's probably not in our best interest. So I don't know, I mean, we don't even have to have it. So I, I believe that we can, we can make it allow and disallow what we want. But like Mr. Herr said, I, I think that this has been, this is something that's been going on for a long time. This, this public, public comment.
Yeah.
It's a kind of a knee jerk reaction right now with how everything, how everything is so screwy with COVID. You know, a lot of times people just won't, it's much easier to sit on a computer and say your thing than it is to come up face to face and sit in a, on a, on a desk in front of us and, and make those comments. So I like, I like the thought of Mr. Herr trying to having us drop the anchor and slow it down a little bit, not, not jump off the cliff because of a couple of months of insanity. And all this has been, really has been insanity on both sides of the fence. There's no two, quite, two ways about it. So, you know, I, I think that we certainly can take a look at it, but I think cooler heads need to prevail. And we have to look at this as a policy that, that we're going to be utilizing moving forward post-COVID. If post-COVID ever happens in our lifetimes, who knows if it's ever going to happen. But I think that, you know, we can certainly make revisions and take a look at it and then collectively make decisions. So.
Well.
Ms. Ritter Bush, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have anything else?
Oh, I, yeah, I was just going to say, let's see. So I, I think we should still allow public comment that's not received by Friday. I'm sorry, I don't, I hope that was clear, but my suggestion would be to give people the opportunity to put a letter in the correspondence to the select board instead of speaking if they want to. And if they want to do that, the deadline should be earlier than Friday because of the deadline for the packet. Sorry. And I don't think any of my suggestions were related to COVID. They're all general suggestions I would recommend at any time of year.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm all set. Sorry, I spoke too long.
The only thing that was related to COVID is that we were doing it by phone so often and, and not person. And our, our history has been in. And our, our history has been in person. You give your name and address or why you're here and who you're representing and and we do the same thing at town meeting. And all of a sudden we're on the phone and people don't have to say who they are. And I don't think, and tonight they did. Tonight you requested who they were. So I think from now on, that's got to be just part of it.
As the chair, I can tell you, as the chair right now, I can tell you, um, had that, had I known how much backlash and repercussion and, and angst that this has caused for, um, not just the, the, the people that wrote the letters, uh, but for the board members and, and the amount of division and angst that it's created. I, I never would have allowed that. I never, not, and, and I'd want it to be sure, to, to be known. It, the majority of people didn't say that they didn't want them read. So I'm not going to go back and rehash it. It, it's not like it was a four to one vote that we don't read them and, and they were read. It was not like that at all. But it is what it is. And, uh, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here because I'm going to be misquoted on many, many Facebook groups, I'm sure, in the next hour or so. So, um, I will, uh, I will move on. Board, are we all set with this?
I, I just want to have one last thing here. Um, just, you know, the chair, um, has always asked for the name and address. And I think there was a, um, an extenuating circumstance for why he said that we, we, we wouldn't have to ask for it. So I think, um, uh, in my mind, I think that, you know, we, we make decisions and, you know, maybe we regret the decision later, but, um, it was, it wasn't just a haphazard decision that he made. You know, he, it was well thought out and maybe it was right, maybe it was wrong, but, you know, it wasn't a knee jerk reaction. He put some thought into it and as to why he would do that. So in, uh, in the interest of unity and, and, you know, I think we need to understand that there are extenuating circumstances at times. And, um, and he made a call. So I think that's okay. Addressing the, the question of whether we tear it up and throw it, I don't think anyone's suggesting we throw this out. I think the public comment section is something, uh, we all like. And, um, and I, but with time, we learn. As things happen, we learn. And we learn also, okay, maybe we need to make adjustments. And I think that's all I've heard being said. Uh, well, that's all I had said. And, and what I heard Ms. Ritter Bush say, uh, were, were just tweets that, you know, we have learned how this has gone. How it's progressed through the years and these are things that we should probably address.
Those are, those are true words, Mr. Nasrula, and, and I appreciate them. Good. So moving forward. So we are on the town manager report. Mr. Kamalu?
Through the chair, um, very quickly, Main Street Corner project, we are now waiting for MASTY OT to announce the winning bidder. We're waiting anxiously. As soon as we get the name, we will let the community know. Hiring freeze exception request, as you saw and as you celebrated tonight, Janet is retiring. We are asking for the board to waive the hiring freeze relative to, uh, to, to grant an exception relative to filling that position. Uh, this is a key position that processes the town warrants weekly as part of our audit process. Also our text rate setting process at the accounting office. Uh, and we would like to fill this position sooner rather than later.
Okay. Board, do you have any, uh, any discussion on that or any thoughts on that? Here, Nasrula?
Just, just one. This, this is just, we're, we're just backfilling, right?
Right.
And do we have anyone in mind already?
No.
Take your time filling it, Mr. Kamalu. Every week that it's not filled, we're saving money.
All right now.
Uh, Mr. Hurd?
Welcome.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Well, I just think it's exciting that we're close to getting a bid on the downtown Carter project.
Nope, we're speaking on, we're speaking on the, uh, on the backfilling of Janet right now.
I, that's fine with me.
Okay, Ms. Ritter Bush?
No, no, um, no objections. Like, seems like an important person to have filled.
I have no objection. So, uh, I will request a motion that the select board adopt exemptions at, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing there. Um, I request a, a motion to allow the hiring of an assistant town accountant.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Nasrula, how do you vote?
Nasrula, yes.
Hurd?
Hurd, yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Lefrenier, yes.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
Dead stone, yes. Now, Mary Jo, you were saying about the, uh, Main Street Quarter?
Uh, no, I'm just think it's exciting that, that we're so close to accepting a bid and, uh, can't wait to get started.
Yep.
With the difficulty I've had getting to work lately, uh, I'm not so excited. It will look nice.
Yeah, uh, moving on, um, but before I do so.
Chair, can we go back one second to an earlier agenda item? I don't think we've quite finished it, at least in my mind, on the MAPC, um,
Pledge.
Pledge.
We lost it.
Do we set a date for when we come back?
Yeah, we, yeah, we are supposed to do that. Set a date for continuing the discussion or.
Mr. Kamalu, do you feel that this is something that we can do and get together and, and collaborate and get on the next agenda or just should it be the one after that?
This, uh, through the chair, this may depend on the approach that the board would like to, to take. Uh, as, as we all know, the pledge was finalized quite a while ago. And therefore, um, moving forward, the board has to be comfortable, um, signing onto the pledge as is. In other words, there is no ability for the town to pick and choose, which then brings me to the second alternative. The second alternative is the board, if the board is not comfortable doing it going that way, the board then can, um, formulate its own principles based on some of the principles that are contained in the MAPC pledge.
Okay.
So depending on wh- which option the board wants to move, uh, we can then decide on, um, the timing. Um, my, my suggestion would be to move this to the, um, first meeting in November.
Okay. Board members, are you amenable to that?
I'm fine with it.
Good.
Yes.
Moving on, Mr. Kamalu?
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I, I wanted to thank the board for granting the hiring freeze exception request. Uh, as, 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 uh, our CFO would always remind us, uh, having two people in the accounting office is always important for the integrity of that, of that office and process. Thank you. Uh, pipeline projects. Wanted to bring you up to speed in terms of the work of the permanent building committee. Just headline news. They are progressing well in terms of putting together the, they are on the reuse of Center School. They are now poised to bring on board. A, um, a consultant will address the financial implications of the different options that they've identified. Uh, we're also working through the feasibility study, uh, in fact, our quality site analysis study uh, for the public safety facility. Uh, we will soon be, uh, haggling with the permanent building committee to uh, decide how best to bring it out to the public, uh, as well as the select board. Uh, as we discussed earlier, um, we, we, we were also making a couple of applications to the CPC. Uh, one of them that I'm putting together would be an application to preserve and restore the windows of the school.
All right.
I would mention the historic tester commission is having a meeting tomorrow night, I believe. Uh, I don't know if you, if you have plans for the windows, maybe you could forward them to the, just so they're aware of it.
Now, interesting enough, we're still in the preliminary stages. We don't have plans yet. However, if the commission, if the historic decision commission has an open forum at the beginning, I can jump in and introduce the topic.
Okay. I'm not the chair anymore, so I can talk to the chair.
Thank you.
All right. Is that all you have, Mr. Kamalu?
That's all I have.
All right. Liaison reports, board members, Mr. Nasrula?
I have none.
Mr. Hurd? Ms. Lefrenier?
No, not this time.
Ms. Ritter Bush?
Um, I was just going to add that the zoning advisory committee is having their annual public forum on, um, October twenty-sixth. So residents are invited to bring ideas for zoning changes for next town meeting. So if anyone has anything in mind, they should, um, either write to the zoning advisor committee or attend that meeting.
Okay. And I have none. Uh, future board agenda items. Board members, Mr. Nasrula?
Just one. After that big storm and the devastation in my area, uh, just a little uh, discussion at some point on where we are with the tree management and how that's all going to go and how we're moving forward with it.
I think old mother nature took care of our tree management.
I've seen quite a few that look ready to topple over still.
Yeah.
I would agree. We should discuss that in the future.
Mr. Hurd? Is muted. Ms. Lefrenier?
I have nothing.
Uh, Ms. Ritter Bush?
Um, I was just going to note that we had a resident email us about the leaf, a leaf blowing bylaw, and I guess we don't have one. So maybe we should discuss if that might be a general bylaw change we might want to bring forward.
Yeah, I looked at that leaf blowing bylaw that, that was supplied, the one from Milford. And so Milford goes around and the, the residents go and they blow their, their leaves. They're supposed to blow their leaves to the side of their property. And then Milford DPW comes around with their leaf sucker and collects them. Uh, Hopkinen doesn't do that. We have a dump that we, that we allow the people to go to. And I think that there, I don't know if we have a bylaw or not, but I, I certainly can, can consider that as, as littering if you're meaningfully, um, blowing leaves onto the public roadways. It's a, it's definitely a safety hazard. As someone that used to ride a motorcycle, I can tell you that, um, that, uh, it's a hazard this time of year and, and, um, you know, those, those wet leaves or even dry leaves, just, it's very, very dangerous. And uh, as somebody who probably of, of anybody in town, I don't know anybody that probably blows leaves more so than I. I do it every single day at my house, uh, blow them out into the woods. You know, I, I think that, uh, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know if we have a, a bylaw. I don't know if we need one. I think, I think that it falls under the, the littering. I know that, I, I would think that that falls under littering, but we can certainly look into that. And, um, I don't have anything on the future agenda items. So.
In that case, Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nasrula, how do you vote?
Nasrula, yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Hurd, yes.
Uh, Ms. Lefrenier?
Lefrenier, yes.
Ritter Bush?
Ritter Bush, yes.
Dead stone, yes. Thank you all. See you later.
Good night. Yo, good luck, Brendan.
Happy Halloween.